So, um. First of all, sorry, we're a little bit late here. Um, I called earlier today to make sure that this room would be available and unlocked, which it was. Uh, but what wasn't unlocked was the building itself. So Jean and I were scrambling around City Hall, trying to find a way to get in, banging on the windows. But our fearless leader, the mayor, was working late and he was, I think, the only one still here. And let us in on his way out. So, um, so we're here. That's why we're late. And thank you to the mayor for being here to let us in by chance. So, uh, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Um, wanna start by acknowledging, uh, that I unfortunately had to miss the last meeting. Thank you all for your understanding and filling in. Um, we've all, and you know, primarily, uh, Frank and in particular Jean have been hard at work with, working with our consultants, uh, Pioneer Valley, uh, Planning Commission, to develop a scope of work for, uh, our digital equity plan. Uh, they have circulated drafts of that scope of work, uh, to the three of us, Frank, Jean and I. And, um, we've provided comment and I believe that as of, uh, today, uh, we have approved the final scope of work that, uh, the PVPC expects will, uh, cost quite a bit of money. I'm surprised to see the figure, um, that will come from MBI exclusively, not the city, uh, in order to fund the work that, uh, we need to have done to develop our digital equity. So, uh, while I was not in attendance at the last meeting, I understand that there were some introductions to PVPC. And, uh, what I think we should talk about in this meeting, uh, are a few things. First, uh, proposed schedule for the, uh, public outreach portion, so-called charrettes, of the digital equity plan process. And Jean, I think you sent some emails today asking for some input and clarity on that that I did not write back to you on. So we can talk about that today.
Okay.
And, uh, set the locations and dates and times for those meetings to the best of our ability. We won't be able to set them with finality today because there's a lot of other variables, including PVPC's availability and the venue's availability, but we have some, but not all of that information tonight. And, uh, and then talk about the PVPC process, how long it will take. Uh, and I understand from them that they'll have a preliminary report, uh, available for us by the end of the year that we can present to the city council before our end of year deadline, which is great. But the total digital equity plan, um, is unlikely to be completed by the end of this calendar year. So what I'd also like to do in this meeting is talk about future meetings and what we're gonna do between now and the end of the year and future potential planning for what we might do after the end of the year as we're continuing to work on the digital equity plan at the PVPC in hopes that they can finish it as soonly as quickly as possible. So, um, why don't we open it up now to any questions that people have about where we are with the PVPC and the digital equity plan drafting process? And then if there aren't any questions or after we work our way through them, then we can start to talk about scheduling and next steps. Anybody have any questions about what I just said and what, where we are currently at with PVPC? Hi, Roberta.
Hi. I'm not, I missed the very beginning of the meeting. Yeah, um, cuz of whatever. You got locked out. Sorry to, sorry to laugh. So I'm not sure if you mentioned this or not. But the gentleman last time, the consultant, I, I think his final words were something to the effect that when he gets paid, he can start doing whatever it is he's gonna be doing. So I just wanted to find out if he's been paid.
He hasn't been paid, um, because we had to finalize the scope of work. But, uh, it's my expectation that that scope of work will be approved shortly and they will have, uh, access to submit bills to the MBI, I would hope in the next, you know, month. I, I don't know exactly how long it'll take MBI to approve the contract. I know Frank has some other experience with that. It might, it might take a longer period of time, but whatever it is, it's outside our control and we have every reason to believe it will eventually be approved. But no control over how quickly MBI moves that contract to the top of their desk and signs it.
Okay, so we should just keep that like in the back of our minds when we think about when they'll be able to actually produce a draft and then the final version.
Well, I mean, I would, I don't know that I would agree with that. I, I, did he really say that? Did Eric Weiss say he's not doing any work until they're getting paid?
Well, for example, he's not here tonight, nor are any of the other PVPC folks. They are waiting for the contract to be finalized. Um, so it's not as if they'll have, excuse me, have it checked, but more that there'll be a contract so that it's in place for them to get paid. Um, but they have been working along. They know how important Springfield is. Um, the scope of work that, um, Council Fenton was mentioning is built on that timeline and outline of who is responsible for what that we reviewed in this group last week and we endorsed, la- uh, not last week, last month. Some, some things may have been added, clarified and based on feedback that we gave. Sorry, a little tickle there. Um, but we did, uh, set up dates for three of five listening sessions, if you will, um, because we have migrated from the charrette, uh, type of, uh, listening and learning, um, to plan the, the digital plan for Springfield to a fuller, uh, more robust way of doing that, that would involve, be able to involve more people. So we do have some dates and the first one is in October and it was, uh, I was tasked.
I'm not sure if the problem is on my end, but I'm not hearing anything.
Not at all.
Okay, now I hear you again.
We can hear you very well.
So I shall, I shall just take his comments last month as the voice of frustration. And I'm glad it didn't prevent him from moving forward.
You're correct about that. I don't, I don't, I can't read his mind if he was frustrated or not, but, but he is moving forward. They're not here tonight because they don't have the signed contract yet and there's a lot going on elsewise. But we are continuing to work together and we did come up with some dates that I would like to present to you. We have three of the five, maybe four of the five set. Um, so there's, we have October twenty-sixth at the Brightwood Branch Library, which is on Plainfield Street in the north end.
At what time?
At, uh, five forty-five. And this, these are all at five forty-five, excuse me. Then we have November thirteenth at the East Forest Park Branch Library. And that's in the East Forest Park neighborhood, very close to Sixteen Acres, uh, neighborhood and not far from Forest Park neighborhood. And then November thirtieth at the Mason Square Branch Library, which is on State Street and where the neighborhoods come together to form the Mason Square area. Um, and they have planned to host a, um, a virtual meeting similar to this format um, on December fourth, which I believe is a Monday, uh, same time. And so one thing that we're looking for still is, um, a date for a session to be held in, at the East Springfield Neighborhood Council. And I don't know if Council Fenton has that yet, but.
I don't.
No, okay.
I should and I'll get one, uh, now that I know these, well, I know you sent this to me, by the way, but I'm just putting these in my calendar. So the thirtieth is the one at Mason Square and that's at five forty-five. And then the digital one is on, right?
Monday.
On December.
Yes.
Okay. So the only one that you're missing really is the one that I promised to do the logistics for, which is East Springfield.
I, I was gonna say that, but yeah.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, so I will do that. I'll get that date.
Okay.
Um.
But you, you're waiting to, you know, get this before we, uh, and for them to, um, give feedback because you're gonna book it around these dates here.
That's true, but I also just haven't done it. So we're gonna, we, we're gonna do it and I will get the date for that one now that we have these other four dates in the calendar. And, uh, everybody on the committee is encouraged to attend if you can. Uh, the only one that's gonna have a Zoom option is the one on the fourth, right, of December.
Yeah.
Um, but the remainder will be in-person meetings and those community sessions will help our consultant, um, get better clarity on, uh, how to put together the digital equity plan based on the needs of the, of the community. Um, one challenge is gonna be, you know, to Roberta's point, what do we do if they don't sign this contract by the twenty-sixth? Well, we're just gonna have to talk to PVPC and ask them to do it anyway.
You know, it, uh, you probably, um, Roberta, you were probably referring to Eric, um, as the person who's, who had the frustration. You're, you perceived him to have frustration. And I was speaking with him on the phone this morning. He did not put forth any objections to these dates.
Okay.
I hope that that.
Uh, let me, let me, uh, sort of weigh in a little bit. So the good news, I think it's good news. I am gonna be in front of those folks tomorrow afternoon at one o'clock for a, for a half-day meeting. So I will have an opportunity to talk to all of the, uh, powers in the room at one time around the importance of getting this contract signed. So I will, uh, uh, circle back to you, Michael, uh, at the end of the day tomorrow, let you know what happened. But, um, um, hopefully I can push, uh, uh, I can pu- do a bit of pushing and get a, get a heard, uh, and an immediate date from them.
Okay. And I'll get, and I'll get a date on the East Springfield location. And, um, I just wanna tell everybody, just in summary, sort of, why we chose the locations that we chose. Um, we were looking for, uh, diversity across the locations that we picked, mainly geographic diversity, um, to provide people from different neighborhoods within the city, a local access point. So what we decided to do was to break it into the city into four different sections based on the school committee districts. So that combines wards two and eight, ward six and seven, wards one and three, and wards four and five. So that's why we have one location in each of the school committee districts so that we're representing the whole city. Um, and Jean has better access and, uh, ability to coordinate room locations at libraries. Unfortunately, we have libraries in each of those districts. And, um, we wanted to do at least one that wasn't in a library, which is why I signed up to do the one at the East Springfield Neighborhood Council, um, building. So that's how we came to those locations and the digital option was provided because, um, there are some people who would wanna participate remotely for whatever reason, um, logistically or pre-existing conditions. So, um, so that's the schedule. Does anybody have any comments or questions or concerns about the schedule?
It's not the schedule itself, but are arrangements being made for translator, at least into Spanish?
Uh, no, I don't believe that we have made arrangements for that.
Um, so.
I. You know, I was gonna say, I would hope, and we can confirm this with PVPC, that they're, that's built into their contract, that, uh, they're gonna be facilitating this process. So my expectation is they're making those accommodations in that work. I know they did some work in Ho-Yoke and they, uh, made some of those accommodations in, in, in their Ho-Yoke meeting, working with, um, Wayfinders. So they PowerPoint they used at the last presentation was in both English and Spanish. Uh, so my expectation is that they should be able to deliver in Spanish and in English, um, uh, this work as well. We, we need to ask them, we need to ask them to confirm that, but that's my expectation.
They, they did, they did indicate, uh, a willingness and an ability to provide their materials in English and in Spanish. But, Roberta, is your question about having a, a translator who can translate what is being discussed at the meeting?
Yes, that was my question. But I all, I turned and spoke to someone who's here with, in my house with me, who's been to other meetings that they have had and they have had translators, um, present. But I understand that people who were there said that they were, um, sufficiently bilingual that they didn't need the service of the translator, which suggests to me that in our publicity for the meetings, we need to make sure that the publicity goes out in, um, not just in English, but in Spanish as well. Cuz I've certainly been in many places in the city where I've had to drum up my fifty-year-old high school Spanish to speak to people. So I would, I would not like to think that that community is being overlooked in our outreach efforts.
That's a good point. So we will, we will look into that. Um, can't make, I can't make a promise that we're gonna have a translator at every single one of the meetings, but we will, we will look into it and explore it, ask PVPC what they can do about it and at the minimum have a translation for, um, materials. Um, I think it's just a question of, of resources. Um, and then a question of what we run into with participants. I mean, if it, if it presented a real problem and we didn't have it, then we would have to make an adjustment for the next meeting, for sure. Um, I also don't know that it's necessarily prudent to have a translator paid to be at every meeting if the demand isn't there and there aren't, there aren't people who need that service. So we'll do the best that we can.
We wouldn't know that unless we were reaching out to people. If we only reach out in English, then the only people who are going to come are in, are people who are English speakers.
So you're in question.
So what I'm concerned about is that our outreach is, is not excluding half the population of Springfield.
Well.
So, so may I?
You may.
Say something? Thank you. Um, so I, I, I'm a bilingual person and not that I'm gonna be facilitating this, but I totally appreciate what you're saying, Roberta. Thank you for lifting that up. Um, Wayfinders who, in their work with these, um, consultants seem to have really good success with translating materials as well as having some interpreters on hand. It seems to me that those are, are lessons that they learned should be carried over to Springfield as well. I don't know if that's anything, Frank, that you are able to bring up when you're in front of them tomorrow or if one, you know, I could reach back out to them. Um, they also said, just refer to my notes here, that, um, they would be, um, coordinating the promotional efforts such as creating of flyers, web pieces, news release and so forth. So then we should all share those widely, um, through that engagement lens.
Yeah, I, I, I think, um, uh, Jean, I think we can, uh, uh, touch base with, uh, PVPC to see what capacities they will have. And if, if that is built into their model and if not, why not? And then if we have to, uh, come up with an alternative solution, uh, I think, I think we can then take that on. I do, I do, uh, think that it's, given the demographics in, of Springfield, uh, we, we're, we'll be, uh, really embarrassed if we end up with people in the audience that can't participate. It's not like we don't know the demographics. So let's, and I gotta imagine PVPC is gonna be tuned in on that as well. But, uh, let's, let's get some more input from them and then figure out how we solve for this. I don't think it's a problem yet, but let's see how we solve for this anyway.
I agree with that. I think that's very prudent.
Yeah, I think it would also be good if our outreach is done through some of the, the local television programs and so forth. There are programs that particularly target different, um, cultural communities in Springfield.
Radio and TV.
Yeah.
Radio stations too. I'm thinking of WTCC, for example.
Um, well, we can, we can certainly ask PVPC about that. I mean, obviously there's a cost, there's a cost to doing those things. I don't know that, uh, I don't know that the MBI grant would cover those types of costs, but we can certainly ask.
There are some stations that do community service announcements that like thirty seconds long, fifteen seconds, whatever. I don't think there's a charge for those. We could look into that.
Okay. Um, Will, you had your hand up?
Um, I just wanted to kind of agree with you, Mike, and then agree with Roberta as well. I mean, I think it's definitely very important in, you know, targeted neighborhoods, for instance, uh, Plainfield, you know, like you've got a population that's majority, uh, Spanish-speaking. So I think it would be important to have a translator there, but say maybe in Sixteen Acres, you know, uh, dependent on, you know, what PVPC's feedback is on that. So that's all.
Okay. Well, you know, we'd all love to have everything translated and a translator present at every meeting and be on the TV and on radio. It's gonna just be a question of what can we pull off and we'll do as much of it as we can. Okay, so any other, uh, comments or questions about the outreach schedule?
No, the only question is, hi, Attorney Fenton, Counselor, uh, we're gonna get the schedule emailed to us, right?
Okay, so in this economy that you just brought me, you are going to pass this two thousand dollars, right?
Email the schedule around as well, um, and just in, we'll email it, but in, in summary, it's October twenty-sixth at the Brightwood Branch Library, November thirteenth at the East Forest Park Library, and November thirtieth at the Mason Square Library. All those meetings are at five forty-five. And there's a digital meeting on Monday, December fourth, also at five forty-five, uh, which will be a Zoom and then there'll be one, one final meeting, uh, a fifth meeting, which will be at the East Springfield Neighborhood Council Building on a date and time to be determined. But we'll circulate all that, Archbishop, so everybody has that information. Okay, so, uh, we talked about the scope of work. We talked about that we've approved the scope of work. We talked about the neighborhood meetings. Uh, I think the next appropriate thing on the agenda would be to discuss what this committee does next and how we collaborate with PVPC. Um, and specifically what our schedule might look like for the rest of the year, um, in order to get this off the ground as much as we can. Um, on the one hand, I, well, hey, let me, let me rephrase. At one point, I thought we were gonna need to cancel all the meetings in October and November that were scheduled and schedule a meeting to meet almost every other week. So we could be here more regularly working with PVPC to put together the plan. But at this point, given the volume of community outreach meetings that we have scheduled in the next two months, uh, I don't know what this group could do productively in the meantime until we have that data. So, um, I'm inclined, uh, to postpone our future meetings until the outreach sessions are complete and we can meet again with PVPC to go over their findings from those meetings um, and to talk about their completion of a draft, uh, plan, which would be submitted by the end of the year. Um, or I guess not draft, it'd be a preliminary plan to be submitted by the end of the year. So that's not to say that I'm opposed to me anymore. I would be happy to meet as regularly as, as the group would like. But at this point, it does seem to me like, um, we're, we're not able to do much more productive work until these outreach sessions are done. And then when they're done, we'll have quite a bit of work to do in terms of going over the plan and the draft plan and we might need to meet, you know, a few times in one month theoretically to do that. But between now and the end of these sessions on December fourth, um, I don't know that there's, that there's much for us to discuss or do. Um, how does everybody feel about that? Do you agree or disagree?
Uh, ma- maybe a, a slight modification. I, I don't know if these meetings are already on our schedule. So, um, one of the things we might find that we wanna do is after maybe a one session or two is actually do a, a check-in just to be sure that what we're getting and what, how it's going, that we sort of just do a touching base. And so I was gonna say, if we had a schedule, then, um, uh, I'm, I'm being, this is my self-interest. I had it on my schedule. I know I'm not gonna schedule anything, um, um, because this meeting's here, but we don't have to hold the meeting. Uh, it would be, uh, a time and place reserved if we needed to use the meeting to do something on an interim basis. So, uh, that, that might be a, uh, uh, that might be too confusing for folks, uh, but that's my, that would be a proposal, um, that we put those, some extra meetings on the schedule and then not use them unless we have to.
That's a good idea. I, I will just clarify, and I know Roberta and Jean have their hand up, but our, our original schedule was to meet the second Wednesday of every month at six o'clock. So we do have another meeting tentatively scheduled for November eighth at six PM. If we proceeded with that November eighth meeting, we would only have one public outreach session done by then and that would be the Brightwood Outreach Session. So, Jean?
Yeah. I, I'm just concerned about, um, these being public meetings, right, under the public meeting law?
Mm-hmm.
So if we were trying to do work just by email or if we were posting and then canceling meetings, my question is to you, Counselor, does, do we run into any trouble with that?
No, as long as we have forty-eight hours notice for the meeting and I know forty-eight hours in advance, I can tell the council staff and then they post it. So.
Okay.
There's no issue at this point with scheduling or rescheduling meetings for, um, October, November.
So if we were to come up with some, as Frank is suggesting we might do, come up with some meeting dates, hold them on our calendars and then determine seventy-two hours ahead of that?
Oh, no, we can even decide the same, we can even decide the day before. I'll post the meetings and then I would just cancel them the same day. That wouldn't, canceling the meeting's not the problem. It's scheduling the meeting that requires the forty-eight hours.
Okay, thank you.
Roberta?
I worry.
Yeah, my thinking, I think is maybe similar to Frank's. I think we need to have, um, additional meetings, not fewer meetings, at least, um, to kind of monitor what's going on with these outreach meetings. And the reason I say that is because we're talking about digital equity where we're targeting communities that are underrepresented, underserved, just under, under. And while I respect the consultants, I have been involved in things that they have called. And I'm not saying that meetings that I've called are any better, but they don't necessarily bring out the very communities that we're concerned about arranging digital equity for. So I think we do need to be, you know, a bit vigilant. Um, not in terms of monitoring the consultants, but rather the turnout. You know, and making sure that the turnout reflects the communities that we're concerned about and that it's not, you know, it's not people who are not part of that community but think they know what the communities need.
Well, I couldn't agree with you more, but the major frustration of public service is participation, um, in community meetings and speaking from firsthand experience. So, um, first and foremost, I think I agree, let's schedule some more meetings and we'll get our calendars out. But I do wanna hit on another item that you just. But I do wanna hit on another item that you just referenced, Roberta, which is, you know, making sure we're reaching the right people and, um. You know, if past experience, and not just with this issue, but with many others, is any indicator. Um, I have more often than not been, uh, wildly disappointed. With, uh, participation in outreach meetings and. Uh, unsuccessful efforts to garner community interest in, um, subjects like this one. So, um, you know, we'll do everything we can to get the word out, and everybody in this committee. And including you, Roberta, is encouraged to help us do that to the best of our ability. Um, but at the end of the day, the people, um, who show up will be the ones who are heard. And we'll make every effort to expand that reach to as many people, particularly the people who are most impacted by digital inequities. As possible. I guess I don't really know what else to say about that. If there's, if there's creative ideas for how to, how to combat that, how to get more people to the meetings. Then, you know, let's, let's hear them and, and do it.
So, um, this is Frank again, so I think one of the things we, we may wanna do, this is, again, the follow-up we need to do with PVPC. About, uh, bilingual capacity also. Uh, we probably wanna be clear with them what their outreach plan is, so part of. Uh, contracting with them to do this, uh, service is that they are supposed to. Help us be successful in our outreach efforts. And so, um, my, my expectation, again, uh, again, I, I'm, I'm. The more we talk about this, the less I know about the process now. I thought I knew what we were doing with them, but the more, um. So I think we wanna, uh, ask that question to them around, uh, around the outreach efforts. How much of that can they help us with, uh, and can they support? Um, so I think, I think they, they have skin in this game as well, since they are being contracted to deliver the product. I think, uh, the outreach challenges that we know we're gonna face, I think they have to be part of that solution, so let's. Put that in front of them as a question as well. How are they gonna help us get the right people in the room?
Agreed. So at this point, the only real thing that we're deciding about outreach. Are the dates and times and locations of the meetings. And there'll be a bunch of other ways that we can reach people and try to get people engaged. But does anybody have any concerns or objections about the dates, times, and locations that are proposed? We feel that these are appropriate locations, dates, and times to be meeting the people. Uh, to, well, to be providing meetings at a daytime and location that's appropriate for the people we're trying to reach.
I think it looks good to me.
Roberta, what do you think?
Yeah, it's, it sounds good. I have a couple of, um, suggestions. For outreach, but. We can come back to that.
Okay.
I mean, the report, the, 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 the report is filled with ideas for reaching out. I'm looking at the school committee members, since we're going by school committee district, I mean, that could be a good way. They might have a mailing list or. People that they say, make sure that so-and-so knows about it. They'll make sure that, you know, twenty people show up and.
Right.
So forth. I'll take that tactic.
Okay, so, um.
Also, the, the C-three meeting. Um, the one that meets at Mason Square usually has about twenty-five different organizations represented there. I don't know about the ones in other parts of the city, but we could reach out to them. Um, the parent, various parents associations at the schools. Perhaps the school board committee could. Um, help to facilitate outreach there. I'm just trying to think of ways. You know, we, we can only reach out, right? If people don't show, but we can say to ourselves, we did. All that we could do, that's, that's a different thing. If, if we fall short on our end. And then people don't show, that's a different story. You know, I think there's, um. I believe he's on. On the call, I'm not sure, the, the minister. You know, perhaps there's a council of churches or other religious.
Yes, 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 I, I will make available, I will get the information out to our network.
Thank you.
That's great, thank you.
Plus the interfaith, now.
Since, since as you know, I do not show up for meetings in person. I will focus on doing outreach for the online, um, meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. So, let's open our calendars and talk about when the best placeholder dates are. Uh, I think that. Keeping the date that we currently have in November, which is November. Eight, yes, thank you, Jean, um. Probably is not a good idea because we will only have been one meeting in. Um, well, I don't know, maybe we wanna keep that date and then do another one later in November after we've got two or three of these under our belt?
There are a couple of holidays in November, so, that will, that we worked around already, so.
Yeah, well, what does everybody think about keeping the meeting on the eighth? That's, that's a date we already have reserved. It would be, uh, it would be after the first meeting. Um, about almost two weeks after the first meeting at the Brightwood Branch. And it would be, uh, a little bit less than a week before the meeting on the thirteenth in East Forest Park. Will?
Sounds good, sounds good to me.
I, I think it actually makes sense to have that meeting, just because if there's any changes that we need to make, you know, before the next meeting that would. You know, be opportunistic, you know, going forward, um, you know, it just makes sense, so.
That's easy, um. What do you think? You, you agree?
Uh, yes, I agree.
But does anybody object to keeping the meeting on the eighth? Okay.
I can't read the chat, if there's anything in the chat.
No, the chat would.
It would show up there.
Show up down here, a little alert.
Okay.
So nobody's chatting. Well, they're, they're chatting just vocally, not typing. So, uh. Okay, so we'll stick with the, we'll stick with the eighth, and then if we. Kept our normal schedule, we wouldn't meet again until December thirteenth. That probably seems too late.
Yeah.
So.
I, I believe that the scope of work says they'll have a interim report for November, uh, December eighth, right?
Is that what it said, December eighth? Okay.
I, I should check myself, but, yeah, I think so.
So.
Yeah, I, I, I think we, we wanna remember, uh, again, this is another check-in for them. Is that some of the data that they're gonna be gathering is gonna be secondary data. So they could have data available that they've collected about digital. Um, services and connectivity and whatnot, uh, that's, uh, uh, quantitative data that they've collected. Outside of the, um, outside of the, uh, focus groups, um, and so they may have some. Material they could actually put forward in a early report that's really about the data they've collected. Uh, the quantitative data that they've collected, so let's ask them how much. Additional data collection and, uh, they'll be able to contribute to a report. Uh, and they may be able to, uh, provide more, more information than what we glean from the, uh. Uh, face-to-face conversations.
What if we scheduled another meeting for December sixth, the first Wednesday in December? It'll be a little bit less than one month after our meeting on the eighth. And by then, all five of the neighborhood outreach meetings will be done. So we'll have one meeting after the first neighborhood outreach meeting, and then a second meeting, uh, four weeks later. To review all of the neighborhood meetings, and it'll be two days before the due date for the draft report. So we might even, if we're lucky, we might even have the draft report by then.
I have our library board meeting that night, but. I'm only one.
Well. What about the fifth Tuesday? Well, I can't, I teach that night. What about the seventh? Thursday the seventh?
That could work for me.
Does that work for you, Frank? Thursday the seventh?
Uh, yeah, I can make it work.
What about everybody else? Speak up if it doesn't work for you, December seventh, six o'clock.
I'm good. I was just looking for where to touch on my phone.
I'm just checking to make sure there's not a, uh, historical commission meeting that evening.
It, there should be.
Should or should not, Roberta? Sorry.
Yes, there should be, at, at least it shows on my calendar.
Yes, uh, so let me look right now, just based on what I have. My queue. Yeah, I'm, I'm tentative on that, I'm sorry.
It's okay. What about you, Alex? Does it work for you?
Find out on mute myself. Yeah, it works for me. The schedule is good.
All right, so let's, let's go with the seventh at six o'clock, with the understanding we might not get Will. And, um. Should we? Oh, I don't have a meeting scheduled for the thirteenth, cause I, I only had them scheduled through November, cause I said we were gonna be done by November. So much for that. Well, I knew we wouldn't be. I just said if we, if we planned for November, then maybe we'll be done by December, so. Okay, so. We'll meet on the seventh, and then. Any other meetings that we wanna be scheduling now, either after the seventh or before the seventh? You think that's sufficient?
I don't know, the final, or the final interim report isn't due until December eighth, so. Do we start hashing it out right away?
Well, so, let's remember that we only need forty-eight hours notice to schedule a meeting.
Yeah.
So if we end up in a situation where. We have this meeting on November eighth, and then another meeting on December seventh, and we need more meetings after December seventh. We'll just schedule them on the seventh, we'll schedule them for the following week and the week after. And try to cram as much as we can in before we start getting into the holiday at the end of the year. Is everybody all right with that?
Uh, sounds good.
Okay.
Sounds good to me, too.
Yep, sounds good to me, too.
Counterpoint, maybe put December thirteenth, for example, on the calendar now, because. We know how it gets, wha- whatever you're doing, tax preparation, holiday celebrations, the end of the year can get. Bananas and.
Yes.
To try to put something on kind of almost last minute, could be hard.
Unfortunately, um, because I did not reserve that date, it is now full, I have DOJ meeting. On the thirteenth, so the fourteenth I could do.
Somebody's looking to get back in.
Oh, I let her back in, but it's taking a while to join.
Okay.
And now she's joining from another phone.
Okay.
All right, so what about December fourteenth as a tentative date? That we'll schedule a meeting for and use if necessary? Does anybody object to that date? All right. So, that's what we'll do. We'll schedule the meetings, so the upcoming meetings will be, uh, the eleventh of November, the. Seventh of December, and the fourteenth of December. And hopefully that'll, meeting those three times in about forty days would give us enough. Time to get a final draft report approved and to the city council for its last meeting of the year. And then at that point, we'll be in a position to talk about what. If members are willing to stay on and participate for the next year, and if the next council president, whoever he or she might be. Would be willing to continue, um, the charter for this group. Um, quite frankly, even without that blessing, I think, you know, we'd find a way to continue to work together to get, to get the main piece done. But the big victory here is, we got the money, we got the consultant, we're gonna get the digital equity plan. And it's something that advocates like Frank and others have been working on and trying to get in Springfield for a very long time. And because of the efforts of this group, it will be done, um, and. That is gonna be tremendous accomplishment, so.
You get an amen, but, amen.
Yes, yes, and thank you to William, I already got the invitation and my email to the December fifteenth meeting, so. Thank you.
Okay, so, any other business? There is someone in the chat. Who's in the chat? Thanks, Jean.
That was me. Yeah, I just, I just wanted. I had mentioned this at a previous meeting, but I just wanted to remind everyone that STIC. Has free. Um, computer literacy course going, and they're gonna start up again. In about two months, they'll be starting again, and a very good friend of mine has been attending, and he. Really has found them extremely useful. So I think it's some, I can, Michael, I can send you the information, and perhaps you can send it out to the other. Members. Um, you know, we all come from different organizations and so forth, so we can spread the word. They're free classes, um, they can be done both in person. As well as, um, online hybrid.
That would be great. We'd be happy to share that information, so. Thank you, Roberta, and her friends, both present with her currently and otherwise. Thank you. So, if there's no new business, then, um. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, and we'll convene again on the eighth of November. Seventh of December, and tentatively the fourteenth of December to finalize the plan. I will make sure that everyone gets emailed the schedule, so motion by Archbishop Paul, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Roberta, okay, so all those in favor of motion to adjourn? Jean?
Hi.
Alex?
Hi.
Timothy Paul?
Hi.
Roberta?
I'm already out the door.
William?
Yeah.
Frank?
I'm right behind Roberta.
And I'm also in high. Thank you all very much for your work, and we will see you, uh, at the outreach meeting.